Good evening, everybody. It's our call to order for our May 22 evening meeting of the Mason County Commission. We will begin with our Pledge of Allegiance. Rob Drexler, would you do us the honor, please, of leading this in the pledge?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What happens quite often, folks, is we look out in the audience because it's considered an honor to give people the ability to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and we look for veterans first whenever possible. So it's our way of thanking them and giving them that opportunity. With that being said, we will move on to item number three, which is roll call.
Commissioner District One, Randy Netherland.
I'm here.
Commissioner District Two, Kevin Schutte.
Here.
Commissioner District Three, Terry Drexler.
Here.
Number four, correspondence and organizational business. Do we have correspondence come for this body?
Yes, we have four items. Janice Lumix and Joseph Moore sent in applications for the Mason County Board of Equalization. Jean Bray sent in comments on the Recreation and Conservation Office Grant, RCO Grant. The Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board sent in liquor license applications for the following: the Tides Restaurant, 27061, U.S. Highway 101 in Hood's Fort; the Hood Canal Highland Celtic Festival Committee at 3151, State Route 300 in Belfair; and Back Country Hunters and Anglers at 3680 Northeast Old Belfair Highway in Belfair. And the Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board also sent in a marijuana license application for cannabis co-op at 431, State Route 3.
Thank you. Item number 4.2, news release, request for proposal homeless housing grant funds. Todd Parker.
Mason County Community Services is soliciting applications from housing providers to aid in the capital purchase, renovation, and management of the clean and sober multiplex house to benefit participants enrolled in Mason County's therapeutic court programs that do not have housing or lose housing while in the program. This project provides safe, stable housing on participants' paths to treatment and recovery. The goal of this project is to improve our therapeutic court programs through increased graduation rates, increased family reunification, reduced recidivism, reduced homelessness, and to reduce the number of people in jail. Applications are due no later than 4:00 p.m. on Friday, June 29, 2018. Application materials can be found on the Mason County website under Request for Proposals. For more information, please contact Todd Parker at 360-427-9670, extension 293, or tparker@co.mason.law.us.
Thank you, Todd. Next up, Public Works, bid award information. I have not seen John, so Loretta.
Evening, Commissioners. John sends his apologies for not being here this evening. This is to announce the award for the 2018 Mason County overlay projects. So this is our paving projects for the year. On September 26, 2017, Commissioners authorized the county engineer to advertise set bid opening date and time and award the contract for the 2018 overlay projects. The project provides improvement to two miles of Johns Prairie Road, and this is referred to as CRP or County Road Project 2012, from mile post 0.5 to 2.6, so that's approximately city limits, out for about two miles, and one and a half miles of Mason Lake Road, CRP 2013, from mile post 1.3 to 2.8. The date and time of opening was Friday, May 4, 2018, at 9:00 a.m. Three bids were received and opened at the office of the Mason County Commissioners. The contract has been awarded to the apparent low bidder, Miles Resources LLC, out of Puyallup, Washington, at their bid price of $1,184,013.84.
Thank you. Next up, news release, Eels Hill Transfer Station half-day closure. Bart Stepp.
Commissioner's public, Bart Stepp, Mason County Public Works. Mason County Public Works is advising citizens of Mason County that the Eels Hill Transfer Station is scheduled to be closed Monday, June 4, 2018, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. This closure will allow McLure and Son, the contractor for the Eels Hill Transfer Station improvement project, to complete soft cutting of road areas that will be resurfaced as part of the project. This project will continue through the summer months, and users should expect longer than normal delays and some closures on Saturdays and some half-day closures on Mondays. We appreciate your patience and understanding during the construction of this project. Notification will be posted onsite, as well as the county Facebook page and Solid Waste webpage. Residents may consider using one of the other transfer stations during the project or a closure. Visit the county webpage to see hours of operation for Belfair, Union, and Hood's Fort drop boxes, or contact the Public Works Utilities and Waste Division at 360-427-9670, or Belfair, 360-275-4467, or Alma, 360-482-5269, extension 199. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up is item number five, which is our open forum for citizens' input. This is your opportunity to speak to the Commission on any item that is not on the agenda. Just so you know, the host item, for those that would like to speak about that, is on the agenda, and you'll be given an opportunity to speak on that separately. But if it's not on the agenda, this is your opportunity to come and speak to the Commission on any issue that you may be thinking about or would like to have communications with. But we do ask, anytime that we have any type of business that comes before us, that you treat us with respect, and we will also treat you with respect. We ask you to come forward, raise your hand, be recognized by the Chair. You'll come forward and tell us perhaps your name and perhaps where you're from, for the record, because everything is recorded. So with that being said, is there anybody who would like to speak on an issue not on the agenda tonight? Well, that was a lot of speaking for nothing. Then with that, we will go ahead and we will move forward to the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move adoption of tonight's agenda as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded for the adoption of tonight's agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Item number seven, approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chair, I move the approval of the May 8 and May 15 regular meeting minutes.
Second. It's been moved and seconded for the approval of the May 8 and May 15, 2018, regular meeting minutes. Any other discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now, opposed, the motion carries. Item number eight, this is our approval of our action agenda. All items listed under the action agenda will be enacted by one motion unless a Commissioner or citizen asks for it to be removed for a separate vote. And don't worry, we will remove the host one for a separate vote. So with that being said, we will read each of these to you, and you'll be given an opportunity to ask a question that may help you to decide whether it has been taken off, or of course you can just ask that it be removed. With that being said, I will read item number 8.1 and 8.2. Commissioner Drexler, if you would read 3 and 4, and Commissioner Schutte, 5 and 6. Item number 8.1 on the action agenda, approval to set a public hearing on June 12, 2018, at 9:30 a.m. to update ordinance number 123-08, building fee schedule to acknowledge requirements set by 8th House Bill 1622, effective July 1, 2018. Item number 8.2, approval of our warrants, Claims Clarion Fund warrants number 8056145-8056530, for a total of $1,161,633.84.
Item 8.3, approval of amendment number 2 to consolidate contract number CLF 18253 between Mason County Public Health and the State of Washington Department of Health. 8.4, approval to waive the 60-day waiting period for Washington State Department of Transportation property that Washington State Department of Transportation is surplusing. This is for parcel 12332-50-00027, and in compliance with RCW 47.12.055 and RCW 43.17.400.
Mr. Chair, item 8.5, approval to terminate contract between Mason County and housing opportunities for students in transition, HOST, contract number HOST-2017.1. And item 8.6, approval of the resolution changing the approval process for private line occupancy permits and franchise renewals.
Okay. So with that being read to the public, this will be your opportunity to ask a question that may help you to decide whether you want something taken off for a separate vote. I will start off automatically by telling you that we will remove item number 8.5 for a separate vote, so there will be further conversation. On any of the other items, 8.1, 2, 3, 4, or 6, does anybody have any questions that would help them to make a decision whether it should be taken off? Are there any items other than the 8.5 that you would like to have taken off for a separate vote? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of items 8.1, 8.2, 8.3, 8.4, and 8.6.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the approval of the action agenda items, 8.1, 8.2, 8.3, 8.4, and 8.6. Any further discussion?
I just once again just want to publicly thank our Department of Public Works for streamlining our private line occupancy permit process and franchise renewals before there was a public hearing required. It took an inordinate amount of time to do something that was probably better for the community in having our septic systems taken away from the water line. But I just appreciate the responsiveness of the department on that. Thank you.
Anything further?
None for me, thank you.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now, opposed, the motion carries. Next up, item number 8.5, approval to terminate the contract through Mason County and the housing opportunities for students in transition, HOST, contract HOST-2017.1. Who's leading that conversation? Is that Todd or Lydia? Well, first, we'll have, what we will do is we'll have staff give a presentation on it or a description of it, then you'll be given an opportunity to ask a question of staff in regards to their testimony. But again, we ask that you be very, very, you know, conscious of your demeanor and any attitude that you may have, because they're working people just like you. So we want to make sure they're treated with respect. But more than that, you will be given an opportunity to testify and to speak to the Commission, no matter what. It's going to happen. So with that said, was one of you going to lead that? Would you please come up and explain to the public what this is?
That's okay. Just can I read a statement?
Yes.
As someone that has spent the last 23 years in education, mostly working on helping at-rough youth succeed and further their education, I support the HOST program. The HOST recommendation to terminate the contract with HOST is not about supporting the HOST program, it is about accountability to public funds. To assist HOST, over 50 attempts through in-person meetings, phone calls, and emails with leniency on due dates has been made, and contract requirements remain unfulfilled. HOST has not submitted monthly invoices, and when submitted, there is information missing or inaccuracies. Program reports are late, missing, and have discrepancies in the reported data. For example, quarter-three reports were due April 10, 2018, and invoice and reports were not turned in. A reminder email was sent with the due date of 4/2018 before the second withholding of payment would go into effect. No communication was received from HOST. HOST supplied an incomplete invoice and incomplete reports May 19, 2018. HOST has also gone four months without entering data into HMIS, a contract requirement, which is a statewide database administered by the top Department of Commerce. There has been an overwhelming lack of communication from the HOST program that we do not experience from other nonprofits when working to resolve errors and discrepancies. Despite these attempts, leniencies, and enacting to withholding of payments, we have not experienced any improvements over the past 10 months. The recommendation to terminate the contract is for nonperformance of contractual requirements. To support our local nonprofit's success, I am taking steps to work with Olympic College to create a nonprofit leadership program to assist our local nonprofits in capacity building. Again, just in summary, I support the HOST program. I cannot continue to support noncompliance of the contract and recommend termination, where HOST will be paid for services rendered up until the date of termination, providing all invoices and reporting requirements are met. HOST is eligible to request funding through the RFP process for the 2018-2019 contract period.
Does any, Todd, feel my woman? Does anybody have questions for staff in regards to anything that was just stated? And remember, this is an opportunity just to find out and get information, not an opportunity to testify. You'll be given an opportunity for that. Does anybody have questions of staff? Yes, sir.
Where can I find that information?
Which part?
Any of it. Is this a study that was done? How did you guys come about it? Is this going to be publicly accessed, or is this as much as we get?
Sure, this with you. Actually, it was given to me. This is actually a log of the conversations. Okay. And is there any other questions for staff? Yes.
So Todd, what you're saying is that they can reapply after, if they can get back to their compliance, and then eventually this will all work itself out? Okay. That's what I was thinking.
Really, they can be paid for services up until the date of termination, if that's what's agreed upon. So really, it might be June that is the only month that would not be, and then they would apply for funding next.
And it's a new round of funding.
Yes.
So there's a competitive process.
In the far back, you have a question?
So is it, are you thinking of restructuring the program? Because you said it would be at Olympic College.
No, no. I just wanted to show that I'm trying to support local nonprofits in the community as far as building leadership and building capacity. It's been identified for several years as a need in the community, so just trying to take steps to provide those resources and make that happen.
For you, or?
For all the nonprofits.
Okay, right here. Yes. Hold on one second.
Are you looking with the state, or are you working on your own nonprofit organization?
I work for the, I'm employed by the county, but I'm considered a lead grantee of state fundings that manage both the local recording fees and also the state funding.
Thank you. Yeah, session.
Can you just tell me maybe some of the other nonprofit organizations in the area that maybe provide, like, mental health services?
Behavior health resources.
Yeah, I mean, I'm trying to think.
SD 113.
Some of them are nonprofit and some are for profit, so I guess I was going to really kind of ask you. Are you asking both, or just nonprofits?
Well, I'm just curious, because if you're looking at, like, and providing information about Olympic College, I'm just curious if you're, like, familiar with, like, some of the other agencies that HOST, like, impacts? Because it just doesn't affect just...
Testimony is another time.
The Olympic College piece was actually, I'm looking for a leadership program that board members, executive directors, program managers, or any other staff within the nonprofit wanted to take a certification, which would be kind of, whatever Olympic College might decide to call it, but something about nonprofit leadership, to give the schools and the tools to lead the organization. Another nonprofit that's a community funder has also kind of echoed leadership and outcomes and reporting as the top two and three priorities that are kind of lacking amongst the nonprofits. So again, I just wanted to point out, I'm trying to take some efforts to support our nonprofits.
Yeah, one had to do with the other.
So the Olympic College is a real, didn't make this, make that, didn't mean to make that confusing.
In the very back row, please.
I have a question, a two-part question. One part is, is that who at HOST, like, is it, like, within the board or the program itself that's, like, responsible for getting this information toward to you? And then, I do, like, grant work with my own stuff, so I know, like, in my grant, which I don't know if it's a grant, there's, like, documentations and paperwork that's provided by the people that you get grants from. Is that something you offer, or does that make sense?
Yeah, if I understand, the second part of the question is, do we offer support and assistance? Yes. And that's kind of the, what you mentioned, the 50, 50 attempts to reach out, have in-person meetings, and a lot of assistance has been offered to help through that process. So it's really kind of a...
You've already asked one, let's see if any of us first.
And then the first part of the question was who? I can just generally say, most of the times, it's the executive director, or if they appoint somebody, it's going to be the one that does their reporting. So it's really up to the organization, the size of it.
Do I see a hand right there? Yes.
Two questions. I was wondering, the first is, who, like, other nonprofits that have reporting requirements like this, like, what percentage of those always submit their things on time?
I can't give you a percentage off the top of my head, but the major difference is the communication that goes on. They'll ask ahead of time, like, hey, I'm not going to be able to get it in. Can I have an extension? And then they meet that extension. If I find any discrepancies, and kick the report back to them, they fix it and get it right back to me. So the difference with the HOST organization is that not getting a two-way communication, and sometimes months go by and I never hear back, even though I've tried multiple attempts at outreach.
And the, thank you. And the leadership development project at Olympic College, how does that be funded?
To be determined. So looking at United Way, has offered some assistance, but it all, I mean, we're just in the very early stages, so by June 15, they hope to have an outline on the course structures, so they're going to have to kind of revamp something that they currently do, and so we're just kind of in the initial phase of it.
Okay. The gentleman in the doorway has his hand first.
Yeah, most everything in here is through a Kim, and I'm sure there's more than one person to that, and it's all seems to be emails, so this is just being sent to one person who's not relaying it back to the top, taking command. I'm more than certain that the people aren't aware of some of these things. In addition, it is in here that January, please.
Excuse me, sir, do you have a question? This is not a time for testimony. You were given an opportunity to testify, but if you have a question, this is an opportunity to just ask a question.
Yeah, I'm going to get to that.
Okay.
This person asked for leniency because of certain reasons, and you guys can read it if you want, but I'm going to leave it in there because it's personal, to ask for more time. It doesn't indicate that any of that, we're only getting a one-sided transcription of what's happening. Your emails have been...
Again, you're testifying.
Has she been given, like, what sort of leniency has she been given? If she's speaking for the call.
Leniency being granted all the way through until those points. I mean, they get every opportunity to submit.
Sir.
Verbal, written?
They just listen to the kids in their house. I know I'm asking some difficult questions. Anybody else want?
You know, one thing I want to make clear, I very rarely ever use this thing, but we don't use this to, these conversations to whip each other up or make comments like that. It's not in there, because I've read it, it is in there. When it tells them that there's opportunity to respond, it's their job to respond, not ours to go left and over again. So please, when you're given an opportunity to ask a question, ask a question. Don't testify, because then I have to gavel it down, and I don't want to do that. You'll be given an opportunity to give us your 100% opinion, and whether we like it or not makes no difference. It's about you talking with us. But for right now, it's the questions. You were first, and then I'll get you over there.
So are you responsible for accounting on the grant? So like, why does Kim have to, why does she have to report to you on all this information? Is it because you're accounting for the money that they use?
In part. So we have a financial manager that's the ultimate record keeper in that, but I'm kind of on the point contact for the grant, so kind of help administer, basically administer the grant.
In the far back room, please.
Oh, so you said that funding might be cut off, like, I think, next month, so if that happens, and then we can be applied, how likely is it that we will save the grant again?
Well, we have a separate scoring panel, and it goes back in front of the Commissioners, so I can't always speak to that.
Yeah, he wouldn't know that answer, because it has to go before a panel.
Is there any chance of there being a corrective action with some of the community support to bring the HOST program into compliance before the month-long deadline, so that they don't lose their funding?
I have to default that to the Commission. I mean, we've done withholding of payments as a corrective action attempt, and a lot of outreach and support, so...
I'm just asking, because we have a lot of people from the community present here that could assist the HOST program with some of these issues that weren't made aware of this, so I'm wondering if we could have an opportunity to be part of a corrective action to be able to...
And the answer was that that's to be decided by us up here, not that it's decided there yet. First of all, I want to say the questions are very good questions. I want to give you guys all a pat on the back, because they're pretty spot-on, so I appreciate that. With that being said...
I have another question.
Last one, though, that's three for you.
So it looks like Kim did have communication with me, so I'm wondering what, what exactly has Kim not been able to do, like, meet you in person, or, because it looks like she's constantly emailing and replying, said Kim sent invoice which you, I think, she did not. And so I'm just confused.
I gave one example, I kind of gave one or two examples in my statement, so that's kind of over a whole 10-month period. So, you know, I'm not saying that there hasn't been any communication, it's, but it has, there has been a lot of nonresponsiveness, and that's where we're at today.
Any final questions before we go into testimony? Okay. Now, both of you have already asked questions before, I'm going to give you one more, because I gave him three. But go ahead, please.
What kind of training has the Commission or whichever office you work for had around cultural competence and social justice issues?
That's not something that I've heard, say, a training in or have been asked to. So if asked, I'd have to go seek those that are knowledgeable and see what to do.
His job is to administer the grants, and there are certain parameters which the grants and money is given out, and his job is to make sure that they meet all those boxes, not that he be educated in each of the groups that we give money to. As a matter of fact, we give money to a lot of groups, a lot of groups, a lot of homeless issues and stuff. This is one of many. Yes, back there.
So the HOST program is no longer able to go on. Do you know of any other program that would be able to assist homeless youth in the community? Because it's a very big deal here.
That's a great question.
The only, the only thing I'll offer is, in their RFP application, I asked for $100,000. They were awarded $44,000 last year. They, there was a question in there that says, what's the minimum amount you can operate on to sustain this program? And that was said at $40,000. So they put in a request for 100, but they said, you know, we could take 40 and maintain the program as it is. So I'll leave it out to decide, you know, where would that other $60,000 go, if that's what's needed.
Todd, do we have any other nonprofits that are out there helping the homeless of different ages?
Well, in this capacity, it is unique, finding the HOST homes for the youth, so that's why, I think it's a great opportunity to find, you know, families that are willing to take in the youth and house them in that capacity. So there's nothing that matches that exactly.
Okay. Other questions before we... Yes, I just stopped Steve today. Steve.
I have a quick question. This is just a grant from our panel team. There's other monies going to the HOST program as well, through other organizations. Is this not true?
Yes.
So I heard, because I know that Oyster, I should say, Scoop and Roder was involved in the HOST program from the beginnings, but I thought that, please correct me if I'm wrong, isn't the Gates Foundation also involved in the HOST program?
Todd puts me in a, I'm going to answer the question. I can put the, yeah, I can, but what I can say is, in the RFP application, we're requesting overall organizational budget, we did not receive that. So, and in the budget, I have them put the source of other funding, and it just said grant. So again, things are asked for, not provided, so I can't answer your question specifically.
Commissioner, you have a question?
Todd, could you talk a little bit about the process that leads up to the request for proposals and trainings that you and the county offers for potential applicants going through that process? And then maybe also kind of talk about how that translates throughout the life of that contract?
Sure. Yeah, because it related to one of the questions over here that I wanted to mention, and I didn't, so thank you for giving that opportunity. So we offer a opportunity for, during the request for proposal process, we offer an orientation to that. And then a week before the RFP is due, then we've offered a feedback session where I have a separate group that allows the agency to present their proposal and then get some feedback to make a stronger proposal, and kind of work out any, some things that they might be kind of wrestling with, or, you know, how we want to craft our program, and what we want to do with it. So we give some feedback before they submit that final proposal. And then, when the contract starts July 1, last year was July 21 that we did a contract orientation. Again, none of this is mandatory, we're offering it as a service, but that's where we went over all our invoicing, all our budgets, and all of that. So what I can say is, the executive director from HOST attended the RFP orientation last year, so a year ago, did not attend the feedback session, did not attend the contract orientation this year for this grant period, since on July 21. And when offered a follow-up session, a follow-up meeting, supplied all the information necessary, gave a breakdown of the different reporting, there was no follow-up, there was no, nothing, no communication back to find out what was being asked of me, and, you know, do I have any questions on the reports as we move forward. This year, HOST chose not to come to the RFP orientation or the feedback session. This year, Host chose not to come to the RFP orientation or the feedback session. But they did submit a proposal on the date it was due, April 30.
Okay, so is there any?
I just, I had another question, sorry, thank you. Um, and then, Todd, is, is the standard the same for all recipients of, of these dollars?
Yes.
So no matter the agency, the reporting requirements, if they're funded through this particular grant, they have the same reporting and data requirement?
Yes. And for like things, so case management, all of them fill out the same case management kind of report that we do. Those that offer housing programs fill out the exact same housing report.
In the far back.
I was just curious, how many years has the host program got funding from this organization, from grants?
I can't, I've been here about a year and a half.
So second, okay. And the first year was the reporting, how was the reporting the first year?
Yeah, so, yeah, I think they've had it for longer than two years. I don't know the exact date. That started us just before my time, so I can't answer that. I lost your question, though, it was.
How was their, how was their reporting before this year?
Oh, so what has, what has changed, and it's good information to have out, is in the, few years back, I don't know exactly when, but agencies were paid a year in advance. So they were asked for reports and some things, and, you know, if they got them in, great. If not, then last year, it was quarterly. They were paid in advance. But even on the invoicing, there was not a real great matchup from the agency's side. Like, you know, we requested receipts and went through our, our financial manager. But they were given in, in advance. So whether they were, if they were late on a report or anything, it wasn't really tracked. But according, by recommended by the state auditor, we, it was to move to a reimbursement model, which you need to show, show your reports, show that you've done the services, the, the expenses that go along with those services, before you're gonna be reimbursed. So I think, you know, that accountability system is what's different.
Okay.
And again, I want to thank everybody for their professionalism, how they're handling this. Thank you very much. Right there in front again, please.
Um, I just want to make sure I understand, because I'm not very clear on something. Just bear with me. So if it sounds like I'm just stating something, it's more of, I'm stating it to make sure I heard you properly, okay? So just bear with me. So I heard you say that it wasn't mandatory that the, the Kim come, or came to the, the meeting, right? But she did come to the first one. Um, but I also heard you mention it twice, that she didn't come to the meeting the first time, or, I'm sorry, the second time, or the follow-up.
So I could, I was kind of counting where you're saying. So out of like six meetings, she came to one.
Right, but.
But I want to clarify, I want to clarify one thing before we move forward. If we can, we don't have to mention, it's just the organization did not attend.
Okay.
If you don't mind, please.
Okay, I understand. So the organization, then, the meetings that you provide voluntarily, that's not a requirement to come to?
Yes.
They came to one, but didn't come to the others, but as a voluntary basis?
Correct. And in the last, last RFP instructions, you know, I did put language in there that the agencies that attended both sessions last time, their, their proposals scored higher as a, as a group. And so I just tried to, like, you know, encourage them that they came, actually did come out with stronger proposals. And then again, with the contract orientation, while not mandatory, I think for me, it's, it's not following up to say, hey, gosh, I was either out of town or something, I missed this. Can we meet? Can we go over it? Um, you know, can, can we have a makeup meeting? And when there's no communication for any assistance afterwards, um.
There's some sort of correlation, though.
Well, and then, again, that's testimony. But something, something to know is, that's not why they're, they're before us today, though. So just know that. Because they didn't show up for those meetings, it's not why the organization is before us. It's because they didn't follow through with other things in order to get the money, and after receiving money, and a bunch of other reasons that they have to go. Hold on, you've already asked two questions. So is there somebody else that has not asked a question that, whoa, hi, go ahead, you're, you're up.
Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure that I'm clear, that you are asking our county commissioners to pull a significant amount of funding from our homeless youth population that are being served by the host program over some of your cutting discrepancies? Wow.
You don't have to answer that one.
I'm, am I correct?
No, excuse me for a minute.
Sorry.
Testimony, you'll be given an opportunity to testify. That was as good a testimony as, as anybody's gonna give. But I want to point out, these monies go all over to many homeless things.
But Host is the only one that serves high school students.
Let me finish. It's, it's not just that one. So just know that there's a whole lot of other grants that are going on. We're talking about this specific grant, and the performance of this grant. Not what it does or anything, but maybe what could be done to fix it or not. Now, those will be the questions, hold on.
You said performance.
Excuse me. Please, this is not how this works here. I would appreciate it if you would wait and be recognized or not. Uh, you've been given two questions. I'd like to see if there's others that would like to have an opportunity to speak. So is there anybody else who would like to ask a question? Yes?
Um, I have a question. I don't know if I've missed this part, but has Host, do we need an audit if the state comes into the organization? And looks at, I don't know if that's how it works with this, but has Host actually ever been audited at their location?
That'd be up to them to answer, but I'm sure everybody's audited if you're.
Well, I can't speak to the past, but not in this contract cycle.
Okay.
So I've been kind of taking one organization at a time, and.
Other questions?
My last question is, so this is process. You, the outcome is not the issue here. What Host has achieved is not the issue here. It's, it's following the, the grant responsibility, is what I'm hearing that to be issued. They, they are a great organization as far as outcome, but it's the, it's the process that isn't being fulfilled in the contract.
The only, yeah, that, that's a, that's a correct statement. The only piece I would offer to that is, you know, without the reports, without that, it's hard to say what those outcomes are. If you say you provide case management, and you don't supply the reports to show that, then it's hard to demonstrate that. And I just come back to, it's really about accountability of public funding.
Now, you will, uh, if you like, we can finish this now, and you can actually come up and testify, and tell us why we should, or why we should not. Uh, what part you'd like to see changed, or how you would like to offer to help, or some other opportunities. But before I do that, I'll ask again, is there anybody that has a question for staff? Hearing none? Any last from the commission?
No.
Thank you very much, Todd, you did a wonderful job.
All right, thanks for that.
Great questions. Excuse me, could you please leave?
Sure. I said my piece. Do you know what you're doing?
It's my sixth year, I've never done that before. That's sad. I hope we don't have to do that again. Please, we treat each other with respect here. The gentleman that was just speaking to you is working at a job. You would all expect and hope that you're treated with respect at your job. These people work for you, they would expect that you treat them with the same respect you want at your job. So please, be kind to each other, and we'll be able to get through this. People may not agree with each other. We may vote differently than what you want, or we may vote with what you want. But we all have our jobs to do. Please, let's just treat each other with respect. With that being said, now is an opportunity to speak and give us your opinion, your ideas, and everything else that may make a difference on this, uh, to the commission. And certain rules I'd like you to remember. One is, you're speaking to the commission. You are not speaking to the public, you are not speaking to the cameras, you are speaking to the commission. And we ask again, that you don't try to rally people up, be respectful, treat us with respect, and we will treat you back with respect. But with this, you, this is your opportunity to say anything you want, within, you know, remember, people are recorded, there's kids watching this. With that being said, uh, the first one that I see, hold her hand up, was, was her, and you. I know you want to get up, but you didn't put your hand up, so. And he's, so, uh, what I'm gonna ask you to do is I'm gonna ask you to come, be recognized by the chair. You'll come forward, come to the podium, face us. We'll ask that you please tell us your name, because everything is recorded, and everything, we'll have minutes that come before us later. If you, if you don't mind, tell us where you're from, and then go ahead and testify. But also remember, there's a lot of people that want to testify, so how long you take is up to you, but this is your opportunity. With that, would you please come forward and be recognized, and tell us who you are, and perhaps where you're from?
Hi, my name is Laura Weed, and I'm from Olympia. And I am a therapist in this community, and I've been working out here in Shelton for over two years. Um, I've been doing school-based services for a very long time. Um, I've worked in Aberdeen, Olympia, but I have a special place in my heart for Shelton. Um, I'm super activated, so I'm a little shaky, and my voice is cracking. Um, so just bear with me while I, like, try to do some grounding stuff, because I'm super activated. Um, I'm activated because this isn't even a little bit okay to me. Um, I've seen firsthand the impact of the host program, how it positively impacts youth. I see how it has saved some of my clients' lives. I've seen how, had the host program not been available to some of my clients, I don't know where they would be. I've seen, um, some of my clients go from not having Maslow's high, lowest level needs, like not having housing, couldn't talk about trauma, because I can't deal with my trauma if I don't know where I'm going to be living tonight. I don't know, I can't deal with the things that I've been through in my life, because I don't know where I'm going to be sleeping tonight. I can't sleep on the streets because of the things that I've been through. So for me, having someone who, I understand that this is his job, and I understand accountability, I understand all of that. And I get it. I get he has a job to do, but I have a job to do too. And I, my job is to protect and help the youth in this community, and without the host program. And I'm not saying this to rile people up, and I'm not saying this to intimidate or to scare anybody. Some of my clients wouldn't be alive. And I'm not saying that to do anything other than to say the facts to you. Okay? So, I get it, paperwork, dude, I do it every day, you know? I, it, it's something that we have to do. Um, and again, I'm not exactly being the most eloquent that I could be.
You're doing fine.
But, um, having clients come to me because they have been through things that you guys can't even imagine, and I can't therapeutically help them, because they don't have a place to live, because we don't have a haven house out here, because we don't have a place, like, we have an Aberdeen for homeless youth to go to. We have the host program, that's what we have. And to take even a little bit of money away is beyond, like, beyond even, like, ludicrous to me. So if you need my help.
Please.
Sorry, if you need my help to, uh, figure out how to, uh, train, or work, or write, or grant, whatever, I'm really good at that stuff. I'll do it. Don't take this away. Don't. Obviously, I'm super passionate, I'm pretty loud, too. And I have a lot of connections, I know a lot of people. And just because I might be done up here right now, doesn't mean I'm done. So whatever your decision is, I promise, you won't, this won't be the last. So the rest of the people that are gonna talk next, let them have it, but I guarantee you won't exceed the last of me.
Thank you. Okay, next up is, who'd I say? Oh, it's you, that's right. Please, if you don't mind, again, mention of your name for the recording.
My name's Edward, I'm a Shelton resident, graduated '02. So I've seen the same faces and look of this town, just like everybody else here. Just want to start off, because it's kind of last minute for me to find out about this meeting, as I'm sure some others here. So I want to do some fact checking. And I use my own resources here. I might say my own, I mean ours. And this was completed November 2017, City of Shelton Comprehensive Plan Housing Element. And it indicates that Host, they didn't say when it started, but in 2013 alone, the schools tracked 409 students experiencing homelessness, of which case, 126 were classified as unrecognized homelessness, which is they're homeless without their parents. And of all the programs I saw, there's nothing to address the youth specifically outside of this. Now, there was a statement made by the gentleman earlier, sorry, forget his name, that they'd only been out for two years, but the record that we saw there is they're at least over five years old. Whether or not they're operating here in Mason County, I have no idea. This is just what quick research I can do. That's a lot. That's a lot of people for a town that's under 10,000, which are projected to grow to just over 10,000. That's a fair amount of our population. That's just youth, and we all know how underreported these types of things are. How couching, couch surfing is just something that's recognized by many households, and not classified as homelessness, but it is. I lived on a couch for a year and a half, for my senior year. If these were programs were even around, even some of the basic outpatient mental health services that we're just finally scratching the surface of, I'd have been in it. And maybe you folks would too. But to just take this away without have something, and, you know, to help, doesn't make sense. Reading that page, that little booklet that we had there, of the transcriptions going back and forth from his office to them, they were predominantly, I couldn't find another name, directed to, towards a Kim. Now, they asked for $100,000 in funding, but they said their minimum was 40. So if you gave them 40, and they can't meet up with these paper trails to keep themselves up, maybe they should have got 100. Got a couple more people in there, helped out. There's just too many people, too many lives at stake, to just, no, got lost in the trail. What do you tell the kid that gets lost in the trail? You don't. You're always supposed to be there for them, try your best. In this case, I don't think we did. 28.9% of the residents in Shelton, that's adults, that's not just these youth, live in poverty. However, 39% of those are women that have children under the age of 18. 42% are those women who have children under the age of five. Those are all the demographics that we work in, and those also are underreported cases. There's just a, pardon me, will I shake all my stuff here? Um, there's six other places I found also on the site that offer homelessness help and assistance. But this is the only one for the youth. This is the only one for the youth. We've had a lot of terrible things happen in this town, to homeless adults. And we can't let this happen to our kids. What if one of them is sleeping on the stairs of a food bank? You know? These are our sons and daughters, these are the people that we have to go and serve, these are the people that we have to look in the eye. And if something happens to these youth, you guys all have to be able to look them in the eye and say, we did our best. And I don't think we have yet. So like all the rest of people, let's try and figure out some sort of remedy here. If it's having other people with our torches going into their office and grumbling to them, that's what it takes to get it done. But let's get it done. But I think they need more help, because there's plenty of homeless people in here that still don't have a place to go. Look at Wallace Needham Park, behind the dog park. I live up in Meridian Park, and there's people living behind my house in tents in the wooded areas. This is not going to get better, especially if we throw this kind of away. That's all I'm saying, thank you folks for listening.
Thank you very much. Well done. Now, for those of us that, that don't know, uh, the chair of the organization is well-known and respected by this commission. He serves as our director, manager of, of Public Defenders.
And I do want to be very clear with the commission that I'm, I'm here as the chair of Host.
Yes.
And not here representing a county agency. And I want to make sure that record is, is solid. And the first thing I need to get into a little bit is that I absolutely understand the issues regarding reporting, and the issues regarding communication about reporting. the issues regarding reporting and the issues regarding communication about reporting. We had a number of communications that did go back and forth earlier in the year. We weren't paid by the county at all until we had our reporting up to speed in March. The county didn't have to pay us a dime. We grumbled about it, but the county didn't pay us anything. We didn't, I think technically there were some violations of the contract on the county's part in terms of the way that we were given notice that we weren't going to be paid, but they were technical. And it was rough. We've been funded by the county since, I believe, 2013. I took over as the Chair of the Board for HOST in late 2014. And I know we were funded by the county as of that point. And we have been, at least in part, ever since. Right now, and Ms. Kishner is here and can speak to our budget at greater length, she's our, our financial head, our treasurer. But right now, we have, our budget represents about a third of our overall budget, which is small. We did request $100,000. The reason we requested $100,000 is because one of the great tragedies of HOST is that we have a waitlist and that we have kids that need to get into the program that can't because we can't serve them all. And so we asked for additional money so we could hire another caseworker so that we could get more kids in the program. The county didn't grant that, but what that waitlist means for us is with our one and a half workers, we have Kim Reinhardt, who is our Executive Director, and Kandora Chenko, who works half-time for us as caseworker and goes to school at Evergreen College the other half of the time. What that waitlist means when you have a staff that's small is everything you do is viewed in terms of number of kids you can have in the program. Every decision you make is, well, can we let another kid in? Can we get another kid housed? Can we get someone else into this program? In the 2017 RFP process, prior to that, our prior county funding was actually at around the $60,000 level. In the 2017 RFP process, it was cut. I think it was cut because we said we could minimally run at the $40,000 level and part of that was we'd received a grant from the South Sound Community Foundation that allowed us to say that. And we wanted to be open and honest with the county and so we said we could run at our minimal level with a $40,000 grant. And so the county granted us a $44,000 grant, which means we didn't add a new worker. But the county added, we went from a contract that was about two pages long to a contract that's about 10 pages long with the reporting requirements. So you cut our funding by about $16,000 and you increased our reporting requirements about tenfold. And that's where we were at the beginning of this year. That took a long time to work out. Yes, you have other nonprofits that are subjected to the same standards. I don't think you have other nonprofits that are as small as us that you may do the same And so in terms of total work, it's the same across all organizations, but in terms of total work per FTE, it's much greater on those of us that have much smaller organizations. By March of this year, I thought we'd had this figured out. We got ourselves caught up. We received a $27,000 payment from the county. I had, at that point, the personal relationships between Kim and Todd and Lydia had broken down to the point where I was stepping in and playing middleman, trying to make sure this thing worked. And we got, we got up to speed and up to date in March of 2018, which is why we got the payment. After that, and this is where Iowa may acculpa to the Commission, I dropped the ball because I had picked it up and I had taken the responsibility and I didn't run with it. And there are 100 reasons why I didn't run with it and a great many of them involve a deputy of mine getting, his wife getting cancer and me getting totally embroiled in my word. But I didn't run with it after March. That's on me. And so in some part, the people in this room that are angry shouldn't be moving Todd, they should be moving me on that one. But the fact that we were able to get caught up proves that we can make this work, that there is a possible solution that isn't just terminating the contract. It is going to require me finding a board member or a volunteer to serve in that position, but I was trying to do too many things at once. And I've heard a number of volunteers tonight and I, I will happily, and I'm directing this at the Commission, but other people are hearing it, I will happily stay afterwards and take a list of names that will, that will volunteer for us to ease that workload because that's where it is right now. If it comes down to reporting and communication, I think we've got an avenue to where we can fix that problem. I'm not gonna stand here before the Commission and argue that there isn't a problem. There is. And I, I do believe accountability is important and I believe having the data is important. I'm data-driven in how I do just about everything else. But we are running at our minimal budget right now and cutting a piece of that endangers And the things that we lose, if we lose the HOST program, are really extreme. This year, the HOST program served 45 different children so far, this fiscal year during the course of this contract, all of whom were homeless before entering, all of whom are housed now. The county's investment in housing those 45 children was less than $1,000 per child. You do not get that kind of ROI anywhere else. These are teenagers. These are some of the hardest people to find homes for. And what you are getting from HOST is a program that is capable of finding volunteers in the community to take these children in and working with them and supporting them while they have the child living in their house. This is a massive community project. It has members of Mason County embracing teenagers who would otherwise be homeless and taking them into their homes and providing them with a support system. The Mason County HOST program, and some of the comments I heard from the Commission tells me you don't know how significant we've become in the state. Ms. Reinhardt isn't here tonight. She's not here tonight because the State Department of Commerce, the people who provided the funds for this grant, have asked her to come lecture other counties at a homelessness conference in Yakima. She is one of the people training other people in other rural counties how to set up HOST programs like the one we have because the Department of Commerce wants our model to be replicated elsewhere. We do have, part of our funding does come from the Department of Commerce. We have a joint grant between us and the Shelton School District. And the Department of Commerce hasn't once complained about a recording to us. We've got, for, I think the fifth year now, we started in 2013, a 100% graduation rate from high school for homeless youths. I don't, I don't even know how to express to you how valuable that is. And I think you already know. I think you can calculate that. And the amount of support that HOST provides for HOST home families that are taking these kids in is really incredible. And I didn't even know that. I'm the Chairman of the Board. I didn't know that until this year because this year I became a HOST home family. I have a child living in my house for the HOST program. And when we took her in, what came with her was a support network from two people who work very, very hard to provide that support network. Kim Reinhardt is not a great bureaucrat. She is not great at making these reports and we need to find someone else to do that and to volunteer. That is not her focus and her specialty. What Kim Reinhardt is amazing at is working with these kids. What Kim Reinhardt does to get to 100% graduation rate, she does not let these kids fail. We are a model program for Commerce. We've been inspected now and reports have been prepared for us by the Housing and Urban Development from two federal administrations with vastly differing opinions on what should be done about homelessness programs, both of which saw us as a model. The Mason County HOST program provides such a value to this county. And the reporting is a problem and the communication is a problem and I don't want to sit here and knock how serious of a problem that is. But when you're talking about public funds and how public funds should be spent, I don't see you getting a better bang for your buck than the one that we provide. And I know that, that reporting is important and we will fix that. And it sounds like we've had some volunteers tonight who might help us fix that. And so I'm asking the Commission either to not pass this motion or at the very least to table it and see if I can get some of these volunteers in action and see if we can get this problem fixed. Before you end up terminating a contract for a program that provides just so much value to Mason County, I'm gonna let everyone else speak now because I think they're gonna speak to that value. I very much would like to see the Commission consider a less extreme remedy. And I know, I know that some have been tried, but partially that is my fault. I am taking responsibility and I don't wanna see the HOST program, I don't, I don't wanna see the county lose the HOST program over this.
Peter, before you, because he is the Director, will you ask him some questions?
No, please.
I just, I do have a question, sir. Thank you. I really appreciate your remarks tonight. So from the time that the contract was entered into last year, until March, you did not receive a payment from the county?
Not until March of 2018.
Okay. How did, how did HOST stay open without those funds?
We went into that fiscal year with $33,000 in reserve and we ran very, very close.
Okay. Peter, I...
And if you want more financial detail, I'm sure Nancy can give it to you. We have an actual accountant here who takes care of those things.
No pressure, Nancy.
So aside from the volunteers and stuff, you know, you say that you recognize what the issue is, that we have that issue.
Yes.
It has to be paid, it has to be documented. That's the way the rules are, the way our laws are set for us. We get out of it yearly, you know that.
Yes.
So we, they may not, but we do.
Yes.
What do you think you can do to guarantee, if they were to reconsider, if anybody would reconsider, to guarantee that that would happen because it can't not?
Agreed. What I would say is this, postpone this vote for two, three weeks. I say two or three weeks because I'm gonna be out of town for a week. And I will say that I would not raise an objection. I would object to you terminating the contract, but I would not pursue any kind of, of anything for you terminating the contract effective as of the state if we can't get it fixed. You lose nothing.
Thank, thank you very much. I'll get another question.
Just a question for staff, if I may. What is, what is, is the, does the contract expire? Thank you. June 30th.
Contract actually is finished on June 30th. So I, you don't get to question him. No, only staff. One thing I do wanna point, point to order, it is not out of order if somebody even in the middle of a discussion wanted to make a motion to table.
I wanna respect that everybody came out here. I'd be very much inclined to table, but I wanna respect the fact that everybody came out here and I'd like to hear the stories if you wanna tell the stories.
I believe I have done it, unless there are further questions from the Commission?
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Threy, questions, come on up. Did you wanna testify?
No, I haven't really let it go. Hello, I'm Hazy Sakosa. I'm a high school graduate from Choice High School and I was 2017 Shelton School District's Most Valuable Student. I am now a freshman in college and I have the next four years planned out to be in college. I don't know what I'm gonna do yet. It's business entrepreneurship, business administration or engineering, it's one of those. So anyways, let's see, I did not do all, I did all the work myself to get myself graduated and get myself into college. Well, not actually that part, but I'm here because I'm driven to do those things, but if it was not for Kim Reinhardt specifically and Kandrea, because they're the ones that I work with, I wouldn't have believed in myself to get that far because on top of, on top of them being there financially, they were also there for me emotionally and like they, they had emotional conversations with me, is what I'm saying, personal conversations. So HOST has been a huge support in my life specifically and Kim has had a personal relationship with me. Now, I wanted to say that this is a, this is something that I read in Martin Luther King Jr.'s speech, our letter from Birmingham Jail. He asked, "Why do we advocate some agendas and not others? And how does it, one determine when something is needed and useless?" Now, I paraphrased that to fit the situation here because if there are 400 kids in Mason County that are homeless and are always supporting 44, or HOST is always supporting 44, there's a lot that still need to be, that still need support. And by cutting the funding, then HOST supports even less of the number. So I just, one sec.
You're doing fine.
Thank you. If this community continues to endorse HOST, then this community continues, continues to help youth that don't have certain privileges that other kids have. The community will grow and everyone will be smarter, job-ready and successful and that are, those are some of the qualities that HOST provides, young youth. So HOST is an opportunity for youth in my position specifically because I was homeless in high school and it gives people a second chance, like it gave me a second chance. So that is the reason why I'm here standing today is because I was given a second chance and that's why I'm so successful is because I, I met Kim when I moved here from Arizona. and that's why I'm so successful is because I met Kim when I moved here from Arizona. I am grateful for HOST because they have done so much for me in two years, even now that I'm out of high, high school, I'm in college. I still call Kim on the phone, I still have communications with everybody at HOST and it wasn't just out the door once I got out of high school. I'm, I'm still there with them, right? So I actually drove from Allensburg today so I could be here and that's, that's how much I support this organization and I hope that it continues to grow and I know personally that Kim is that person who wants to help every kid in this community that is homeless and is not as privileged because that's who Kim is. She is very driven. That is what she is and that's who, that's what she's about. So I just wanna thank the community for allowing me to come up here and briefly explain who I was, where I come from, where I'm going and how HOST has endorsed all of this and I'd appreciate that. HOST gets the funding from everybody.
Thank you very much. You're a successful man. Good job.
Appreciate it.
Yes, come on up. Please, again, just a reminder, direct everything to the commission, if you don't mind, say your name, perhaps where you're from, so that we'll have for the record.
My name is Marah Shelley Count. I am from Aberdeen, but I grew up in Shelton. I would like to speak to some of the points made by the other people, actually. To start, Peter, a great guy, wonderful guy, he has all of my respect. And for him to say, "If you're gonna be mad at someone, be mad at me," that strikes me as wrong. Because anger is not the right reaction, just as taking this funding is not the right reaction. And I really feel like if we're going to meet about this, it shouldn't be meet to take, it should be meet to solve. Solution is how we support our community, not taking away from each other. Now, I have actually worked with HOST previously. I've worked with a, a lot of different youth-based organizations in the community, nonprofits, because at one point I actually was a homeless youth. And it took me until my third year in college to not be homeless anymore. And if I had known about the HOST program, maybe I could've been in a home sooner. And it's incredibly important to me that it is understood how beneficial this program is. So if we're going to talk, talk solutions, that is why I support Peter's suggestion of tabling this so that we can find something that will work. Now, as, as a person who's worked with HOST, I have seen the effect on the kids themselves. And yes, they help get housing, they help with education, they help with jobs, but they help in a much more important way. They give support, they give a very special kind of love. And that is what these kids take away. They are taking away the love that they don't have, but that they really, really need. They are taking from these people the support that their parents or their family or their, maybe even their teachers are not giving them. And that is a fundamental need. You have to have love to grow and become better as a person. And that is an integral part of what HOST does. And I've seen it and I've felt it. And it was an incredible experience to be able to work with these people and it would be wonderful to work with them in the future. And the only way that's gonna happen is if the funding stays. Because what, what needs to happen is they need more support. They need the money, they need the help. And if they can do that, they can hire more people. Kim wants to hire someone else so that she can focus on the funding. She wants to do that. And if she could do that, then it would be much easier to meet the requirements of the reporting. And all I can say is that if the funding stays, maybe she'll be closer to her goal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. In the far back, yes, please.
Hello, how are you today? Um, my name is Debra Roberts. I grew up here in Shelton, I graduated from Choice. I currently work as a gear-up student support interventionist at Choice and the director of Chauvin Innovators, which is an after-school program from the district. I wanna take a moment and thank you because I do understand we all have people we're responsible to and you took the blow of these very passionate people, so you're a brave man, thank you. Sorry, I know that's against the rules, but-
I should've stopped you, but I was too busy agreeing with you.
Um, I want to take a moment to recognize and understand that we all do have to be accountable, especially when money's involved, because someone's paying this money, someone's giving this money and I wanna recognize how important that is for everybody involved and the responsibility that you all have on your shoulders for representing this county. But I wanna take a moment, I don't claim to know any one of your lives or the history that you came from and I'm gonna be real vulnerable with you in this moment and tell you where I come from for a minute. I'm a product of methamphetamine addicts. I spent most of my life homeless, hungry and just on the run from the world. And when you live your life like that, like a lot of these students do, you live your life recklessly because you don't really believe people love you. And when you don't think people love you, you, it doesn't matter if you live or die. And that's a big thing to think about, especially when you're 15 and you think that way. A lot of the kids who come through this program are in that same state of mind of survival and just living and being in the moment of today and what that means. And that means entering the criminal justice system, that means doing things that are maybe unheard of for some people to survive, that means getting in abusive relationships, that means doing things that could be unimaginable for children to partake in to make it through their next day. Now, I bring this up to you because I think that what we really have to focus on is that you are representatives of our community, of our county. And so what you're doing by giving us the opportunity to fix the mistakes of this organization is you're actually investing, investing into the citizens of your community. You're making sure that those kids become the people that will one day take care of you, will one day be making these decisions for you and your families. And what you wanna be prepared to do is give them the best opportunity to be the best citizens of your county, of your town. They're not hiding in the back door. These are young people who have all the power in the world to take over and lead us into a great new era. But what you have to do at this point is give them the opportunity to feel that love, to feel that responsibility, because what happens when you believe that someone cares about whether you live or die, whether you're hungry or not, whether you are a good man or a good woman or however you identify in the world, is that then you become responsible. You become responsible to yourself and you become responsible to other people and you become responsible to your community. And when that happens, a beautiful thing happens, a growth happens. You get to see the leaders of tomorrow take control and action in a way that you never knew and understood before. So what I ask you today is not to just invest in HOST, but to invest in yourselves, to invest in your community, because today we have the opportunity to continue to grow Mason County and all of us. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Who else would like to speak next? Yes, in the far back.
So my name is Becky Story and I also work at Choice. And I did not plan on speaking tonight, so I don't have anything really prepared. But what I can tell you, I'm the registrar at the school, which means I'm the one that enrolls the students physically into the, into our computer. And we do see these students come into our schools homeless. These are kids that will not look at you in the eye, they don't trust you. With this HOST program, these kids are given a place and a lot of times they become family with the HOST family that they live with. It, it gives them pride, it gives them one less thing to worry about in the world. So I do hope that you will consider that when you guys are, decide whether you're going to keep the program or not, the funding. I do understand the paperwork portion of it because I also do that at Choice and grants require certain things and we are required to give those. And I, I just really, I like the program. I think it's a great thing for our community. They don't just service Shelton, they service Mason County. So that all of our youth in Mason County fall under the help that HOST can provide.
Thank you very much. Yes, in the hallway, please.
My name is Amy Doring and I work for Catholic Community Services for a program called WISE, Wraparound with Intensive Services for Mental Health. And I, like the other therapists that showed up tonight, I can say I have seen this program change lives, I've seen this program save lives. And I've been listening, trying to think what I could add without duplicating. And so I think what I might offer in that respect is I've lived in, I've worked in Mason County for the last couple of years, I've lived in Thurston County, I've lived in Pierce, I've lived in King County, and this program is unique and it runs on pocket change compared to what most counties have. It gets an amazing return on investment and because of the way it relies on the community support. And I really think that that is something just amazingly special about your community, that you can call upon them to ask for their help for these young people and they respond. And I would consider the return on investment, not just what's gonna happen to these kids if this program goes away, where they will be, if even one winds up in juvenile detention, you know, you're costing yourself more money in the long run. More likely they'll wind up victims and be in the court system that way. And this, again, is just so unique to this area. Pierce County didn't even have a resource for homeless youth until I think a year ago. So I think you guys should be very proud of yourself for what you've done here and I hope you continue to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Hello, commissioners and everyone. My name is Julianne Gale and I'm a resident of Mason County. I'm also a youth engagement specialist at Community Youth Services based in Shelton. And I want to, first off, just thank the commissioners for hearing the voices of the community because as people who represent the county, you know, seeing such a big turnout with such late notice and even though it sounds like maybe you would agree with Peter's proposal, wanting to hear all of our voices, I really appreciate that and I'm grateful to get to hear all of the things that I got to hear today. I wanna share a couple of things. One is that HOST doesn't just help homeless youth, it also helps temporarily homeless programs because when we don't have a space to meet with one of our youth, Kim has opened the doors of the HOST space so that we could have a meeting in their space to meet with one of our youth, meaning that we were able to provide the mental health services that we were contracted to provide and have a safe space to meet with, with the youth. And also, I really appreciate Peter's proposal around, can we table it? And I appreciate all the proposals around how can we problem solve together? How do we come together as a community to find a solution? And given that contracts are the way that they are, you know, we have to solve the contract that ends June 30th and meet the requirements as it was signed. But it sounds like, you know, a new grant cycle is beginning and that sounds like a real opportunity for you all to consider whether the change that you made is working or not. Because the purpose of the reporting, the purpose of the, like you're not writing a grant so that you can get a report, that's, that's not the point of getting a grant. You, you're offering money so that we can provide services in the community. And there's lots of ways to judge whether those services are being provided and what's the impact they're having. And we have heard a lot of stories tonight about the deep impact that the HOST program has here. And I used to be a teacher before I was a youth engagement specialist and when a student failed a test, it could mean a lot of different things. It could mean they didn't know the material. It could also mean that I didn't write a good test or that the test didn't make sense. And as someone who's worked in nonprofits and in schools for a long time with a lot of different kinds of requirements, sometimes you have to make really hard choices. Like I have a youth in crisis, do I support them right now or do I fill out this piece of paperwork that proves that I helped them if it, if it would come at the cost of helping someone else? And some people, their hearts are so big that it's hard to ever say no to helping a youth in crisis right now for the paperwork. And I understand that you need to know if, if, if the work is being done, but maybe you could consider for the next cycle of grant proposals, adjusting the reporting requirements so that they're more manageable for very small organizations who are having such deep big impacts on the community. And I just, I invite you all, as my last thing I wanted to say tonight, to just look inside your hearts and think about what your values are. Is the most important value to you, you know, meeting paperwork requirements, meeting the letter of the law or meeting the spirit of the law? And I don't know if you have biological children or children that you are close to or youth that are important to you in your life, but I think we've all heard the phrase, "It takes a village to raise a child." And you all are in a very powerful position right now in terms of deciding whether to continue funding something that has supported such a vulnerable section of our community for the last five years and there's no replacement lined up to step in if this goes away. And I hope you think about, you know, when you look at yourself in the mirror tomorrow morning and when you go to bed tonight, you know, many years from now, is it gonna be about the deadline of a particular piece of paper or is it gonna be about the role that you played in supporting the youth of our community? And when I look at each of you in the eye and I see how you've been moved by what people have said, I'd like to believe and I think I can say that, you know, you wanna do the right thing for the bigger cause of our community and our youth. And so I urge you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes.
All right. My name's Carrie Fennel. I'm sorry I like had to leave, but I actually teach a class at night.
It's all good.
But they're like at Denny's, just wait.
They're a while.
Exactly. Okay, so I teach at Choice. I've actually worked in the community with education for the last 25 years, so childcare, early childhood, education and now Choice for the last 19. So one of the most exciting things that has happened for me as a teacher is HOST because there are so many times when you are working with students that their needs, I've always provided food, I've always provided those basics things, but I've had so many kids who've lived in cars, who have slept in the post office, who have put themselves in really uncompi, in compromising situations because of who they're living with. You know, they live with a boyfriend, but he beats them, but she, they can't leave because they don't have anywhere else to go. So the thing that I have seen since HOST has been established is I've seen many, many, many first-generation high school graduates going off to college and that is solely because of that program. Because it's not just about being homeless and getting on top and getting your basic needs met, but it's trying to figure out how to not live in crisis anymore and how to dream and figure out what it is that- but it's trying to figure out how to not live in crisis anymore and how to dream and figure out what it is that you have to offer the world. You know, what is it that a person can look at me and value? And so when kids figure out what that is and then they're able to share it, you know, they don't have to worry about where they're staying. They don't have to worry about food. Then they can start really working on themselves and their talents. And I just, there's a lot of kids in this room that are Host right now. There, I, in my program alone, just this year, I think I have 15. I don't know, I don't know where they would be. And that's a hard thing as a teacher, is just knowing that kids are going into unsafe situations. And I don't have to worry about the Host kids. There's still other kids I have to worry about because there's so many other kids that need the help and assistance. But to see those first-generation high school graduates not only go to high school and complete it, but then go off to college or figure out what their dream is and, you know, get a well-being certificate or, you know, join the military, whatever it is, it, it's super powerful. And I would agree with Diva that um, it's so empowering when people get to use their gifts. And I believe that Host is the very best way to do it. It's so much cheaper than anything else. I mean, I mean, just relatively helping someone come into your house. And what Host does is really small amounts that they're helping the, the, the families that are taking the kids in, but the dividends are huge. And so I, I would love to see Host expand, obviously, because in my classroom I see lots of kids that are not served. And I would love to see them all served. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Who else is, oh, Steve, come on up, please.
Good afternoon Commissioners. I'm Steve Andrewsky. I live in beautiful Oakland Bay. Glad to see you all. I don't want to touch on what Artisman said. I think we heard a lot of good stuff. What I want to touch on though is a story I heard about four years ago from a prior principal of Shelton High School. We've heard a lot about Choice. And this story really grabbed me and it's about a student that was a straight A student. And Wanda was her name, if you remember, principal of the school. And she said, "All of a sudden, this child's grades just plummeted." And so they called her in and said, "What's going on with you? You know, we know there's an issue." And apparently, due to the change in the daylight savings, this child was homeless and they couldn't do their homework anymore because it was too dark to do their homework at night. And so had nobody known that this child was homeless, it truly affected their ability even to be educated. So when I thought about that, I thought, "That's pretty serious, that some children are ashamed of their situation." But they're desperate and, and we are a community. And I know, I know that this will be resolved and it'll be figured out and the best things will happen. I wanted to touch on one other thing that was on my heart and that is, can we streamline our process? Maybe look at it, why is it 10 pages instead of two pages and figure out what, what's different? Why can't we bring it back to something more reasonable? So again, I don't know what the process is. I'm done there. I've seen. But I want to thank everyone for being here and I appreciate all that's happening here tonight. Thank you.
Yes, please.
My name is Brianna Sheetz and I'm a resident of Mason County. I don't have any students who go to Choice, but I have five children from Shelton School District. And their ages are between 13 and 17. What this program offers is so unique and so fundamentally important to our community. We know that poverty for so many kids is the norm. And even within the Shelton High School, there's kids that are secretly struggling. And if you don't have boots on the ground in there with those kids, those kids get lost. Nobody's going to notice those kids if they're not directly there dealing with those kids. Yeah, you guys can redirect that portion of the funding into another program, but that program's not going to connect with those children. Those children are going to get lost. And I think that it's really, 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 really important that you guys understand how important it is to have that placement where it is currently and how it's able to serve those kids because it has a connection with those kids.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Hello, everybody. Commissioner Nederlin, Drexler, and Shetty, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Sasha Fishell and I work for the Shelton School District. I'm the homeless liaison for the school district. And so I feel particularly well situated to kind of talk about these issues and talk about the need in the county and the need that the Host program addresses. As the homeless liaison in the school district, I coordinate the district's program for homeless youth and families. And I work with many of the youth that the Host program serves and many of the youth that the Host program doesn't yet have the capacity to serve as well. And so I think that, like I said, I'm in a really good position to talk about what a difference the Host program makes, what a difference the services that they offer youth makes and uh, and what the difference looks like between youth who are supported in that way and youth who don't have that support. To be fully transparent, I'm also the Vice President of the Board of Hosts. But today I want to speak as the homeless liaison because of the reasons that, that I said. And so I'd like to go on record supporting the work that Host does with, with homeless students. And to urge all of you respectfully to please not cut the funding for the Host program because it's so vitally needed in this community. To talk a little bit about numbers, the numbers that I identify every year in the school district. Last year, my program identified nearly 490 homeless students in the Shelton School District experiencing homelessness. This year, we've identified 500 homeless students up till now. And close to 100 of those are unaccompanied homeless youth. And of course, this number varies and fluctuates. There's always more students than we, than the number that we identify because identifying with this population is so difficult and requires, as people have said, boots on the ground, building relationships with kids, and the ability to provide these kinds of services and provide stability that we just don't have the numbers to do. Host is the only, I think some, I heard somebody mention that there are other agencies offering support to, to homeless folks here in the county. And that's true. Host, but Host is the only program offering housing support for unaccompanied homeless youth. That's the one resource in the county that I can send my kids to, that I know that they will be well taken care of. They'll receive housing support and that I do not have to worry about them. And for me, in my job, that's a relief. And I know numerous kids who, who have benefited enormously from this program and from the services they offer. So I've seen Host do incredible work with amazing students in very tough situations and possible situations. And for many of these students, they would not have made it through school without the support of this program. And just to go a little bit more deeply into that, the students that I work with, I, what I see is on a daily basis, they ask themselves questions about basic survival. They're asking themselves daily, questions on a daily basis about, "Where am I going to sleep tonight? Where's my next meal going to come from? Am I going to be safe tonight?" All these questions about a basic survival that, that have to be answered on a day-to-day basis. And, you know, I say that because I think that it's important to consider that, but what I really like to focus on when I work with my students is who else they are as well. Because the students that I work with aren't just homeless youth. They're also poets and they're musicians and they're writers and they're artists and they're future lawyers and future doctors and have incredible, amazing skills that because oftentimes in their situations, they don't have the opportunity to, to realize those skills and to realize that capacity. And so that's what I like to focus on. And I think that the Host program offers the opportunity for these kids to realize those, those abilities in themselves. And I think it offers, it offers the opportunity for the community to, to, to receive the impact and the benefits those kids have to offer when they receive stability. I think Peter mentioned that the graduation rate of the Host program was close to 100%. And I just want to put that in perspective because the graduation rate for homeless students in the school district is around 48%. And so that's a huge discrepancy. It's a huge difference. And I think that that number speaks to the effectiveness of the program. I'd also like to touch on, Peter mentioned basically about, briefly about where our Executive Director is right now and who invited her there. And I'd also like to talk about the other recommendations that Host has received from around the state and around the country. So we had a visit from, from the, from the Rigs Foundation and the Rigs personally came to visit Host and wanted to learn about the model that we use, right? And they're one of the ones who invited the Host organization to go to this conference and present to folks around the state about the model that Host uses here in Mason County. The Washington State Department of Commerce has paid a lot of attention to the Host program and really sees Host as, as a model for how to address youth homelessness in Washington State. The Office for the Superintendent of Public Instruction in Washington, who I have a lot of contact with, that's the, like the Department of Education, whatever sees education in the state, views the partnership between the Shelton School District and Mason County Host as a unique statewide model for school community partnerships in addressing youth homelessness. And consistently, we folks who are doing studies and interviews and case studies around the state, Host probably points them towards us because of that partnership and because of the results that we get. So um, so I guess just to conclude, you know, I, I'd like to really emphasize the results of this program and what it allows kids to accomplish and what it does for students in the Shelton School District and around the county. I think that these services are indispensable and crucial. And um, I would urge you to, to not cut funding for the Host program. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to testify at this time?
Oh, I'm sorry, one more. So we've also, there are folks who could not make it tonight but wanted to contribute in writing some of their thoughts. And I have some letters here.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else who would like to testify at this time? Yes, please.
Hi, my name is Mia Vazetti. I am a transplant to Mason County. I started off in California and then I moved to Nevada where I spent eight years earning my bachelor's degree in criminal justice and then I went on to earn my master's degree in criminal justice. I then worked for Washoe County Juvenile Services for approximately a total of about, oh man, six years, I guess. And so I'm going to leave all of the very specific storytelling to the people that know it best. But when I got here, I was completely blown away by the Host program.
Please, please.
Sorry. I was completely blown away by the Host program because my time in juvenile justice, entering the juvenile system with the impetus for diversion programs. Sorry, I'm very emotional about this. Our kids had to hit the juvenile justice system before they got any kind of diversion services. Once they did that, we had a ton of funding and a ton of programming and a ton of availability to help them. Mason County's not exactly equipped for that. So I encourage you to think of Host as a diversion program. And as far as return on investment, it's a real good deal. Because all of our diversion programs, I'm not going to go into the budget of Washoe County, Nevada, but I can guarantee you that they cost more than a thousand dollars per year. So, um, reporting wise, I am very well acquainted with reporting. I submitted a study to the FBI IRB, which is the Internal Review Board. And we ran a huge study on sex offender recidivism in juveniles, which required only five of us to be privy to information. We had to keep that information locked down even from our supervisors because we were going back 20 years on NCIC data. So if there's any way that we can come up with a way to fix this reporting and to fix this communication, I would be the first to volunteer to help out. But it would break my heart to see Host suffer because of paperwork and reporting issues. So, thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak? One more time, is there anybody else who would like to speak? Yes, please, come on up.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Hamilton. I am the current counselor, school counselor at Choice High School. I have been in education for over 10 years. The last four have been here in Shelton. I've also been a social worker for the Department of Social and Health Services, Children's Administration, doing child and family welfare service work. So I know the amount of paperwork and um, reporting that is necessary. I would say that I, as a school counselor, would not be able to do my job in the way that I'm able to without having Host as a resource. I have felt very lucky to be a part of a community that values providing basic needs for kids. And not only that, but investing in building relationships so that kids can feel the value that they have in this world. And I wouldn't be able to do my job without being able to partner with Host or a Kennedy Ventil liaison. And just as a social worker perspective, hat, Host has been able to place kids when the department couldn't. At least a dozen this year, kids have been able to have more, have food, have connection when social workers were able to make that happen. And we know that crisis doesn't happen, you know, on Monday at, you know, 12 o'clock in the afternoon. It happens on a Friday at 5, 6 o'clock. Host places those kids. And I just don't know what we would do as a community without it. And so I think that if we're talking about reporting standards, we need to collectively come up with a solution and not throw in the towel on something that makes me proud to be a part of this community. So.
Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, is there anybody else who would like to speak at this time? Anybody else? Harry and Nun, we will close this part of the discussion and move to Commissioner deliberations. Commissioners.
I want to thank everybody for coming down. I, I've known about the Host program for a long, long time and I was absolutely shocked and surprised when it was reported to us that we weren't getting any communication because I had nothing but the utmost respect. I'm really glad there's board members here. Thank you so much for being on the board. And if there's others, I don't, thank you for that. This is an incredible program. It truly is. I just, and I appreciate that people have stepped up and said, "We get the reporting requirements." And let me just share you why it's so important to us right now. We have two, two main forms of funding, our mental health, substance abuse, and homeless and housing needs. And we are forming an advisory group to help us target it. This little bit of money, about 1.5 million, I know it sounds like a lot, but if you think about the need, it's huge. I know it sounds like a lot, but if you think about the need, it's huge. And we need to target it to where it's going to be the most effective. And that's why we need to see what's going on. And the story of one person is absolutely valuable. But when you're talking about productivity and those sorts of things, it sounds very cold, but it's so helpful to a group of people trying to figure out, okay, who's in and who's out? That's the toughest decision in the world. You've got $350,000 worth of requests, and you have $100,000 to give out. It's hard. So there's various tools you have, and the data requirement is one of them. I think it's kind of ironic that the Department of Commerce is awarding a group that actually requires some of this reporting. I am very much in favor of tabling the issue. I think it is doable and fixable. And again, I thank the board members for being here and hearing, you know, our concerns as well. And so I would definitely make a motion in that direction, but I'll wait and see if there's more deliberation.
Okay. So you're not making a motion at this time, or?
Mr. Chair, and to everybody that came out tonight, I think it's important to note that none of this is a reflection on what we believe to be a tremendous program for our community. We think that HOST is a valuable asset to the community. That's why we fund it and have funded it in the past. We know that we live in a community that is very generous with time, with resources, and all the effort that goes into making these programs, HOST in particular, but certainly the other ones in our community, work. Those are people and faces and families and stories and experiences behind each and every one of those organizations that come to us and ask for money, and they're all trying to accomplish the most good for our community that they can. And it's because of that that we have to be very mindful of how we hold people accountable. And I think, you know, we know how important the presence of a stable adult can be in the life of a child who's going through a crisis, like many of the kids that come through HOST. We know that that's a critical element to whether they're going to make it or not. And my concern with how HOST has operated in terms of the contract that they agreed to this year is, and I hope that I'm given something from the board to make me believe that this 51st time will be the one that we can get it right with. And it's a tremendous leap of faith. And I think what needs to also be said is the tremendous amount of staff time and resources the county has put into this program in terms of trying to help them be successful. And that's not to take anything away from the staff, time, and effort at HOST. It's just recognizing that Todd, in particular, has a lot of grants to manage, and there's a lot of need to try to address. And quite a bit of effort has been put into HOST. And I don't want that to get lost tonight because I think Todd is doing a tremendous job in trying to strike that critical balance between funding the needs that we have with limited dollars and holding people accountable. And so we don't take it lightly when staff comes to us and says, you know, "Hey, we're having this issue." You know, I guess my, I guess I wish we would have done this in March and not five weeks before the end of, you know, the end of the contract. Because we've really, it's going to be very difficult to test whether or not whatever the board would come up with from HOST would be successful in mitigating the problems that we've had on both sides and what that means for future funding opportunities, which I intend to fully and fairly consider going into 2018. And so I have quite a bit of concern with tabling this for that reason. I will, I will go along with, I would be willing to listen to a motion that does table this. However, it's critical that, and I think waiting the three weeks is probably too long. So if we need to find somebody else on the board that this work can be delegated to or whatever, I mean, I, you know, I don't know. But it's just, it's critical that we have compliance with these things because we do have a responsibility to the broader county as well. And so I have a lot of concern with, with a tabling or postponement of this, in particular out of respect for staff who has worked very, very hard on trying to come into compliance or get HOST into compliance.
Thank you. You've heard some many different reasons why this is such a serious issue. It may not seem like it on the outset with people, especially when motions are flying. But, you know, staff does go through a lot to make these things happen. They're not just living in a box, they're trying every single day to make it work. At some point, they have to say, "I can't," and we need to do something, and that's when they come to us. Yeah, I want to point out that Todd is a very, very impressive man. If you didn't catch all that, very impressive, and he's doing his job by bringing it forward to us. And he should not have been booed or yelled at. He's literally, that's his job and his responsibility. You know, somebody said earlier that they weren't going to judge us because they don't know our past. She was right to say that because she doesn't know. You know, I am one of them, you know? I literally am. There's a few of you that know that. I literally lived in a camper. When I first came here to Washington, I lived in a camper for two weeks at my father's property who I didn't know. And I ended up in a little trailer with no power, no water, and I got myself through. And I just cared more about making money than I ever cared about going to school. And in life, you make your choices, and then you go on. I went back to school later on in life. But so you're right to not guess our past because you don't know. We've been through a lot of things, each and every one of us have in this room. Now, with that being said, even though I feel that way, I don't make my decisions based upon that because I have responsibilities that I'm supposed to do. You know, one perfect example of that is, that's the first time I've ever asked anybody to leave. I don't know if you guys caught this, but she knows, my name knows me by Randy. I'm in trouble. I'm going to pay for that dearly. But that's my job. It's not personal. I meant nothing disrespectful. It was what's necessary to make the meeting run forward. First off, I want to say, what is it they say about, "You can tell the quality of a tree by the quality of its fruit"? That's some pretty impressive people that were speaking up here today in front of us. You know, I am inclined to request a motion for tabling, but not for the reason why you're thinking. As somebody had said, because they're standing in front of us, I don't worry about the threats or the worries or anything like that. Matter of fact, one thing I learned a long time ago, when people say, you know, "I'm the people." You're a person. There's a lot of other people, and there's a lot of other people who want money and stuff like that. So that's not the reason why. But I actually am excited about the idea that you all showed up, not to come at us, but to actually be there and support that I have a feeling that you will hold them accountable. You know, we expect to be held accountable on a regular basis, but the only way something like this would work is if they were held accountable because we did our job. Our staff did their job. They reached out over and over again. So now, with that being said, I would actually hope, though, if there was a motion, being the chair, I try not to make a motion. If there was a motion, I would hope that it would maybe only be two weeks and that it would be with an understanding that it would go to staff to verify that they found a way to fix it so there would be no loopholes or no failures at this point again. Because that's what you're doing. You're asking staff to spend the hours again. And I don't want to ask staff to spend the hours. They've already done that. I came in today fully intending on saying no, and regardless of how many get mad because it was the right thing to do, but I truly believe that you'll be held accountable and you'll be made to do it. So it may be a valuable lesson for all of us, and it may be a good investment, as somebody said earlier. So.
Mr. Chair?
Please.
I would make a motion to table item 8.5 on today's action agenda until June 5th with the expectation the HOST Board of Directors will assure fulfilling of contract requirements.
Is there a second? I will second. There is a motion on the floor moving that seconded that this item number 8.5 be tabled until the June 5th meeting date, at which time the question will become whether or not you were able to. Are you also throwing in that show?
That the expectation that the Board of Directors will assure, will fulfill the contract requirements.
Will fulfill the contract requirements. That's what the motion is, so we stay with the motion. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I would just ask how, what ideas the commission might have, you know, to encourage that. What would that look like to the commission?
Reporting be done in time. The past due reporting be done. The invoices that are past due would be submitted correctly. And that there's an expectation that if the past due work is done, then I'm imagining the June 30th contract date then would have some reporting requirement after that. So the second piece is still outstanding on the reporting and invoicing.
And as you know, there were three different commissioners here, so we have different ideas of what we'd like. And so that's naturally an incredibly great question by Commissioner Shu.
I think, I'm thinking that the terms of the contract is you do not get paid if you haven't reported or done your invoicing. And so, you know, this gives at least part of the overdue invoices an opportunity to be paid. And then to go forward to the end of the contract term with this new way of being in compliance, and that's all of it, that was.
And for myself, what I would hope to see, I would hope that you would take those volunteers, you'd get one or two of them, put them directly on this, have them be a direct liaison with staff, make sure that staff gets absolutely everything they need and overboard within these two weeks to make sure that staff is comfortable, that they believe that you can fulfill your obligations. But again, that's just my desire and my hope. And I know that if that's what I hear within a couple of weeks, and staff comes to me and says they got it all figured out, I'm going to be hoping this whole thing goes away.
Mr. Chair, I certainly appreciate where this is coming from. My concern is without conferring with staff and realizing the demands that this might place and that kind of thing on staff, I'm not going to be able to support the motion as it stands. And I think my preference would be to have a reporting back sooner than June 5th. I think, I think that, you know, would be helpful. But as the motion stands, I will not be supporting it.
Can I make a recommendation, and not for the vote, just a recommendation, that we have our briefings every Monday. It would be wise if it was done immediately and we were briefed on it as soon as possible in a positive manner.
Monday's a holiday. We will not have a briefing.
So it's not going to happen.
But I believe by, by code, are we not in session on Tuesday? Can we not?
No.
We can't, we can't figure out for a brief, no, but for a briefing.
Yes, we can be here for briefing. I have no problem showing up if you want to.
We could definitely, if everybody can get it scheduled, yeah.
We could even show up on Monday if we wanted. It's our thing. So.
And we don't have a regular board meeting on the Tuesday.
You can even talk to us afterwards and tell us if you think that's doable in order to set it up.
My only concern is that I'm out of town starting Thursday to Monday, and so I've got one day before Tuesday, which I can be working on that. And I'm not sure it's realistic to expect that I'm going to have this solved in one day.
I'm sorry, this is no longer part for the.
I was just going to volunteer.
No, my apologies. But I would hope that you would reach out to your volunteers and maybe have one step up. It sounds like you have a couple of very capable people, so let's see. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I guess a point of privilege, if I could hear from staff as to your ability to have some turnaround in that timeframe.
That's a realistic question.
But Tuesday is a turnaround timeline.
To have at least something to come back to the commission with that you have communicated, some corrective measures that could be taken between now and the June 5th date that was mentioned in the motion that can be vetted by their board.
Well, the June 5th is a reasonable timeframe. In my experience, it's one of those places that where corrective action or an action plan comes from.
Them.
From them. You know, where departments or how long they're in an organization, there are the ones that create their plan of going forward and how they solve these. So that's, so asking for the reporting and everything, I think it would be fair, I would like to see that plan come from them.
But I guess maybe my, maybe to clarify my question, is, has it been made clear to them what it would take to put together a corrective action plan? What, what the outstanding items are and what they need in order to, has that been stated to them?
Yes, and I'd go further within, between now and the June 5th timeframe to meet and clarify or have new folks involved, you know, kind of recreate that, so.
Okay.
No, please, you can't. This is not the, I'm sorry, there's a structure we have to go by. Please, I understand, please. Okay, with that, Commissioner, you have any other?
But you're, do you feel that that's a reasonable ask of staff at this point?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I'll get your opinion.
Okay.
All right. Further discussion? All right, the motion is to table till June 5th with the hopes of everything being cleared up and a new way of doing business set up with staff by then. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The side of this table until June 5th. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. We still have more business we have to do. You do not have to stay. But thank you for your voices. Thank you for your opinions. You need a pat on the back, you did a great job with some of your presentations, I tell you.
Thank you for caring.
Yeah, thank you for caring. Make that organization work, guys.
And with the permission of permission, collecting, you know, but.
That's all up to you. That's, yep.
I'm really a nice person, I promise.
I know you are. I have one.
Depends on how they score. We've got an independent panel scoring them.
Yeah, that's a whole different thing. Yeah. That's because she rocks.
I want to be like her someday. Although, I'm going to keep the blue hair.
Thank you. It's gorgeous. It's gorgeous.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go ahead and continue with our meeting. That brings us to item number nine, which is other business, department heads, elected officials. Are there any department heads or elected officials who would like to speak at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to board reports and calendars. Commissioner Drexler, would you lead off?
You do, that's okay.
No, go ahead. Commissioner Shu, would you lead off?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Give you a chance to catch up, sure. Mr. Chair, just looking ahead to the next two weeks, given our meeting in Belfair next Tuesday, I have a meeting with Debbie Riley and Alex Basie from Environmental Health to talk about septic issues in Hootsport. Also be attending the TIPCAP outreach session in the evening. Later this week, courthouse security, and then I have a couple of constituent meetings as well. Be at the law enforcement breakfast Friday with the Special Olympics students. We have our Belfair meeting next Tuesday, and then I'll have a criminal justice working team jail subcommittee meeting, North Mason School District, and Olympic College, Bachelors of Science, and nursing presentations. And then all of our public works folks have left, but it is National Public Works Week this week. And I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you for everything they do on this, during this National Public Works Week. They're appreciated this week and all 51 other weeks of the year.
Thank you. Let's see. Last week, we had our Mason Transit Authority meeting. I did attend the swearing-in and the first meeting of the Shelton City Council, invited them to please consider who would represent the city on the, our new behavioral health homelessness, mental health task, task force, or advisory committee. Had a good meeting with behavioral health organization and the sheriff's office regarding contract requirements for the criminal justice crisis training, and then met with, under Sheriff Adams, met with the Board of Health Chair regarding some of the work that the, or not Board of Health, the Board of Equalization. And then I had a meeting of the Thirsty Mason Behavioral Health Organization and a meeting of the Transportation Improvement Board. We had a Board of-
We had a Board of Health meeting today. And then tomorrow, I will be on a webinar about the integration of behavioral health and primary health put on by the Governor's Office. And then we'll have our first meeting of the budget, Citizens Budget Advisory Committee. Thursday, we'll have a PAC Mountain Budget Development Meeting and then Lewis Mason Thurston Area Agency on Aging and Economic Development Council's Appreciation Day. And then into the holiday weekend and back here on Tuesday for, we'll have a Wednesday, we'll have the meeting in Belfair, our fourth, fifth, the Tuesday of the month meeting.
All right, Mr. Lewis, right after the other meeting, talk about our budget and the budget committee and the budget issues and his ideas that he has. I went and visited Coyote Village, attended the Sand Hill Ballfields ribbon cutting open house, attended an all-day session at the Shelton High School going over the business plans of the students. Again, they were wonderful. Couple of them, I keep hoping they're going to make work. The idea of kids like that being entrepreneurs is just incredible. Public Works, they, they used to be this place, this place, this place. I attended a meeting with Jerry, then I had to go and meet with Loretta on a different issue and then Cindy on a different issue. I also, that's the way it works. I also attended, well, there was more when they heard I was there, so. ARC Annual Meeting, the PR, Provincial Regional Transportation Organization Meeting. We had our regular briefings, North Mason Community Voice Meeting, of which Judy Scott is now the new chair because the Soboas are moving. We had our briefing with the auditor, the Board of Health meeting. After this, I have a meeting and leadership event that's happening at the Port of Bremerton. I have a Memorial Hall meeting tomorrow morning, Mount Moriah meeting, that's a special night to celebrate veterans. North Mason Chamber Luncheon, 2018 EDC Membership Drive. North Mason Resources, Teresa is retiring and moving on to different pastures in Oregon. Trails in Lake is having a flag retirement ceremony, of which they've asked me to come and speak. North Mason School District have a facilities meeting, of which I attend because of the grant that we were able to get them, I'm required to. And then that brings us to our Belfair meeting on Tuesday. All right, is there anything further?
Mr. Chair, I've moved that we adjourned.
Second. Hearing no objection, we adjourn.